A little bit of feedback, so he's gonna stay, he's gonna stay muted the whole time unless until, you know, we ask for his feedback and at that time, maybe don't talk over him because that's when the feedback occurs. Um, and I'll just keep checking in to make sure that if he has something to say that he has that opportunity.
Okay, so everyone's admitted and we're good to start whenever you are.
Thank you so much. Hello, everyone. As you log on, welcome to the San Marino Planning Commission May 25th meeting. Can we start by doing a roll call to make sure we have quorum?
Yes, we can. Chair Boyle.
Here.
Vice Chair Brody.
Present.
Commissioner Chang. Commissioner Dustin.
Here.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
And alternate Commissioner Okazaki.
Here.
Thank you. Normally at this time, we would have the flags loop, but because we are all in separate areas without a flag, we will forego that for now. Thank you all to the commissioners for being present tonight. The first line of business is just to recognize the fact that the agenda for this meeting has been posted 72 hours in advance at the San Marino City Hall, the Public Library, the Recreation Department, as well as the San Marino City website. Each commissioner has received plans and staff comments, and we have reviewed every item on the agenda and visited every site. The general order for the hearing in each case will be as follows. Staff will discuss the case and provide background information and a recommendation. I will ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to comment on the proposal. The hearing will then be open to the public and I'll ask for comments for, against, or about the project. We will take comments from in-person participants. Sorry, this is a typed out script. Obviously, everybody is in the Zoom world. So we will take comments from everybody in the virtual world. As to make this note that we have not made previously, the applicant, you will be given 10 minutes time to discuss your particular agenda item. Any public comments will be limited to three minutes. We will give you a warning at that time if you are over three minutes and at the five-minute mark, we will give you a warning as well. And if it continues, we will mute you so that we can move the meeting forward. And I just want to set those expectations ahead of time so that everybody understands what we need to do in order to ensure that everybody gets their time to speak. Um, in all cases, please come forward and give your name and address. When speaking on an item, please do not repeat comments, comments previously made, but rather acknowledge agreement with previous speakers. However, please present any new and additional comments. At the conclusion of the public comments, the applicant will have a chance to respond and then no further comments from the public will be accepted. At this time, the commissioners will start our deliberation on each agenda item and the public comments are considered closed. We are not apt to reopen the public comments unless there is a, what I want to say, a interesting debate going on where we may need more feedback. Um, most of the cases will involve variances, conditional use permits and/or design review. The commission will discuss and act on each one individually. In each case, variances will be considered first, then conditional use permits, and finally, design review. If there's no motion for approval or denial, the planning commission has the option of continuing the application to a future meeting. In the event of a denial, it is hoped that the applicant will have heard comments during the public comment period and during deliberations that will be useful in submitting an application. It is important for the property owner to understand that once a project is approved by the commission, the drawings become legal documents. If any changes are made to the project subsequent to approval without obtaining proper approval of those changes, then the property owner is in fact breaking the law. There is a risk of having to change the project back to the originally proved design or paying a fine to the city of San Marino equal to the greater of 5% of the project valuation or $2,500 and then resubmitting the changes made to the project to the commission. It is also important to understand that there's a 15-day appeal period after action has been taken for the applicant or any interested party to request the city council to review and act on the case. The commission will usually take items in the order shown on the agenda. Occasionally, I'll take them out of order if there are a large number of people here on one item. That item might be taken ahead of others as a courtesy to those present. The commission will not start a new item after 11:00 PM. Items not heard will be carried over to an adjourned meeting or the next regular meeting. At this time, I would like to ask if there are any public comments that are not included in the current agenda. I see none. Do you agree, Director Figueroa and Camille, Camille, Associate Planner Martinez?
Yes, I agree. There's no one in the chat that has raised their hand or indicated otherwise.
Great. So let's move on to agenda item number one. Is there a staff report?
Um, yes, I do have a staff report. Staff recommends that the planning commission continues the project to date uncertain as requested by the applicant. Currently, the applicant is conducting more outreach to the adjacent neighbors in an effort to address concerns regarding the project.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion or there commissioners, are there any questions to staff or is there a motion?
I'll move to continue item number one, initial use permit number 2201, design review case number DR 21-80, which is at 1865 South Los Robles Avenue to a date uncertain as requested by the applicant.
Thank you. And can we have a roll call then on the boat?
Yes, Chair Boyle.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brody.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin.
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Just another question. Procedurally, do we have to see if there's anyone from the public that wanted to speak on this notified item? Or no, there's nothing to talk about? There's nothing for the public to comment on?
Uh, I forgot about that. Steve, do you have input on that?
I don't see any reason why you can't take the action you just did and have a public hearing at that future meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for that, Commissioner Chang. Um, so can we move to agenda item number two? Can we have a staff report, please?
And actually,
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna be recusing myself from this item, so I'll be back later.
Okay, thank you. So Commissioner Okazaki, because Commissioner Dustin has to recuse himself, you are a voting member on this particular agenda item.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, Steph, can we please have the report?
Yes. Item number two, designer view case 22-14 for 2765 Canterbury Road. The applicant is requesting to reconstruct a new single-story residence with a detached two-car garage. Previously, this project was an after-the-factor request that was previously approved administratively as an addition. And due to unforeseen demolitions that resulted in more than 50% of the structure's exterior walls to be modified and altered, the reconstruction is considered a new structure. In some history, this project was previously brought before the planning commission in January 26, 2022, where the planning commission denied the project without prejudice. Therefore, the applicant had to resubmit the designer view project to be brought forth before you again. And since the last time this project was before you under a separate application, um, the changes in the scope of work include the reduction of height in the mechanical equipment area to six feet, seven inches, which cannot be counted towards livable area or floor area per the building code. Um, a reduction in door exercise to that same mechanical equipment area and a reduction in square footage in the mechanical room and in the basement media room. They also provided a landscape plan and material board that was requested as well. And all of that is submitted together in the agenda packet. As a recommendation, staff is recommending that the project be approved with the findings and the conditions of approval as it meets all zoning standards and is compatible with the residential design guidelines. I'm able to answer any questions and the applicant homeowner are also online to answer any questions as well, as I know they, they have a proposed presentation for you.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff?
I did ask staff a question, but they recommended that I ask the applicant or applicant's representative, so I will do that.
Okay. Any other commissioners? Seeing none, I will now ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to comment on the proposal.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Patrick Zerpiky. I'm the architect on 2765 Canterbury Road. Camille has a little quick slideshow presentation that we put together for this. Are you able to bring that up, Camille?
So, yeah.
All right, let's see here. So, um, we've put together just kind of a brief presentation, just to kind of highlight some of the stuff we've been working on over the last three months with, with both planning and building to, to address some of the issues that we, we had presented on the first, the first go around back in January. You can advance this slide. So quickly, we'll just kind of discuss the overall support from our neighbors. We'll overview the landscape plan and hardscape details that were not presented last time. We'll also discuss the tree protection and care. We have some revised mechanical sunken crawl space area, so we'll discuss that. We've reduced the basement footprint. And then we just want to discuss how we feel that the proposed plans are sensitive to the massing, the privacy and the compatibility issues set forth last in January. Next slide. The, the homeowner was kind of hit the pavement multiple times. They have, they've been pretty, over the last course of the last seven months, when the project has been shut down, they have been really kind of canvassing the area, just making sure if any questions or if, you know, things are being taken care of on site. But they were able to receive 14 letters of approval based on the new package. And the overall, the overall consensus really was, you know, they're, the neighbors do feel that this is compatible, our proposal to the single-story ranch neighborhood. And also they're eager to see it get back hammers going on the site. And next slide. This one just kind of shows the, the same, sorry, the same, the first round, we did have the same 14 letters. There's, I think there's a, a mix of one or two that happened not to be home the second time around, but we caught an extra one this time around. Next slide. The landscape plan, this is a new plan that you guys were, were not, was not submitted the first time around. Our proposed landscape plan is, is very similar to the existing plan prior to construction. The proposed front yard is consists of St. Augustine grass with a mix of plants. The homeowners chose to go back to Pride of Madera, Dwarf Katie Raylia and a Variegated Mock Orange. There's an existing stone pathway that is the same stone as the, the original facade. We intend to repair and replace as necessary, but keeping the same location and size. As part of our proposal, we are proposing doing a new concrete drive and apron. This would, the next slide, please, sorry, Camille. This just kind of shows the proposed saw cut pattern and border that we are proposing for the new driveway. The, the front yard impervious surface area is going to remain at the 15.4, which is existing, so we are not increasing any impervious area. The backyard will consist of St. Augustine grass with a mix of plants, dwarf lily of the Nile, some snapdragons. And the client does propose planting a hedge in front of the existing perimeter CMU walls that are shared with the adjacent neighbors on the side yards in the rear property. Next slide, please. We are not proposing removing any trees. The, the homeowner is grateful of the, the shade providing mature trees on the property. Since the start of construction, the client has maintained tree protection fencing around all the trees and has continued a watering schedule. This image is from May 12th showing that the, the, the two maple trees are very happy in the front yard. Next slide. One of the main areas that we really worked on with building and Camille was to establish the sunken crawl space utility area. This, this space is open to the other crawl space, I think, in, in our new proposed plan. I showed a graphic of just an example of how it's still going to be open and it's just a sunken area for, to house the mechanical equipment. Building department said the maximum of six foot seven, we must maintain that to, so it is considered non-livable space. We also worked with our subcontractors really to understand exactly what we need and just the required distances around that equipment. So from January meeting, we've, we've reduced it in size by 18 square feet. We will have three 40-gallon water heaters, two FAUs, one for the ADU, one for the main house. We'll also have a sewer ejector pump for the lower level bathroom and then a sub-pump for the perimeter foundations. Next slide, please. Okay, sorry, just kind of highlights the, the equipment we're using. And then the next slide. Another thing that we did was we just made, reduced the size of the access panel to a 22 by 30, which is the minimum allowed to, for building code to access this type of equipment. And again, we just reduced the size from the last submittal based on just what we needed in that space. This one was more of, we reduced the size of the, of the media room by 38 square feet. This is more of an inconsistency in the previously approved plans from the, the original architect. Back in January, Commissioner Boyle highlighted that she just felt like there's a lot more square footage than there, we're proposing the 596. So we, we took that in account, looked at the poly line around that space and were noticed that we did need to reduce the space to, to accommodate that. So the livable basement area is the inside face of the concrete CMUs, but we will be adding a, a two-by-four wall for insulation and running conduit and what have you. So it is truly an outside wall-to-wall of the space. So we, that space has graphically been reduced from the last presentation. Next slide. And that really just, in closing, I just wanted to thank Associate Planner Martinez. She's been really accessible to work with over the last three months, just having access to her comments and reviewing the package. So we did have a thorough package. The last package we presented in front of planning commission in January was a very piecemeal presentation from the previous architect, myself, and it just wasn't, it wasn't dialed in. So we really, with the homeowner and Camille, we really tried to put together something in front of you that is consistent and free of errors. We do feel like we are, you know, maintaining a single-story home here with a minimum plate height of eight feet. The addition that we're proposing to the original structure is entirely in the rear and we are maintaining the same side yard setbacks of 15 feet. We're also adhering to the bathroom windows being frosted. And overall, we're, we are proposing restoring and preserving the existing front facade to maintain the single-story ranch neighborhood feel. And that's in closing for myself. And I'm open, free for any questions.
Thank you so much, commissioners. Do you have any questions for the applicant or the applicant's representative? Commissioner Wright, I know that you opened with it, so please go ahead.
And he spoke to it a little bit. I just want to understand the livable area. Because if you look at page, well, four of the report, I think it's page 10 of our packet, it says that the livable, proposed little area is 3,765 square feet. And it's, the maximum is 3,767, so it's two feet under the maximum. The January presentation said the exact same thing, that the livable area was 3,765 square feet. So you said you reduced the basement footprint. I think that's what you said in your US as something that you had changed. But okay, but you're telling us now that that was because you had actually presented a project to us that was over the maximum. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so now you are basically still at the maximum. So to say that you reduce the basement footprint, frankly, to me is a little misleading.
Yeah, we didn't mean to be, but I just wanted, I really was just really wanted to express that we, we, we heard Commissioner Boyle, we, there was a mistake in the plans and we, we adjusted the space, so it truly is the allowable space. So yes, we didn't reduce it from, as your point, we didn't try to make it smaller. We, we want to still maximize the size of the media room and the, the game room down there. It just, it is just accurate now.
Well, for future reference, I would prefer you to put it in writing that it was because of the miscalculation. Because I bought a time on this, on this presentation.
Oh, I got you.
And I didn't understand that. Because it's still, of course, the maximum. So thank you for that clarification.
I apologize for that, sorry.
Commissioner Wright, did you have any other questions before we move on? Okay, Commissioner Chang, Okazaki or Vice Chair Brody, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, not here.
No? Okay. So at this time, I would like to ask if there is any publicly, any, any people, any person from the public that would like to make any comments for, against, or about this project?
I don't see anyone in the chat and double-checking the planning.
I don't, yeah, I don't either.
Nothing in the planning, so no.
Okay, so at this time, I will close the public comments and the commissioners will now start deliberation on this particular agenda item. Commissioner Chang, why don't we start with you?
Uh, thank you. So yeah, I think I, I'm, I'm supportive of, of the overall plans that have been submitted. I, my biggest concern in the previous submission was the utility room closet that is now kind of more per code and more regulated, per regulations of, of what would be allowable for a utility room and not necessarily something that just could become habitable. And I think the facade has not changed much from the original existing home. I feel like all the additions are subterranean and just to the rear, which does not impact the overall compatibility with the neighborhood and neighbors. And I also will note that the, from what I can gather, the 14 support or at least non-objections with some comments that they were actually supportive of the new neighbor in the home was a positive outcome. So I think I'd be able to support the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Okazaki?
No additional comments. I, I also supported. I think the plans as presented was excellent. And I'm also very supportive because the neighbors all support this project as well. And it looks from the front no different than it is today. So that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
Thanks. Well, first I want to say thank you for the landscape plan. That was a great addition as well as providing the notice per our request. And I appreciate that and the utility. I think all those things are really good things. Otherwise, I would say refer to my comments of January where I thought it was too big. I still think it's not compatible with the neighborhood. You gave the chart of the houses and we're very proud that you were our biggest, you know, one. But that doesn't mean those other ones are good either. And we, you know, the old two wrongs don't make a right kind of thing. So for me, that wasn't persuasive. You never, you didn't even reduce the garage. Even the garage has to be bigger than, than a usual garage. And, and to be at the exact maximum, we've proved my point because the first time around, you were above the maximum. And my bitter experience is either the plans ended up wrong, the builders do it wrong. It's highly unlikely that that will actually be within the maximum of our code, my, per my experience. So I just don't, I just don't think it's compatible. It's too dense. I have thought a lot about Commissioner Chang's comment from the last meeting about this is sort of the, the future of, of development and we need, and we're going to have media rooms and gamers. And, you know, I, I thought that was a really valid comment and I thought a lot about, a lot about it and talked to some people about it. Again, my core maybe isn't, isn't all of San Marino. But I think what I came up with is that, that may be true, but I'm personally not going to be the one to go that route in our beautiful city that is so beautiful because the houses don't take our lot line to lot line and lot line to lot line and, and just don't have all these buildings and, and don't have all these basement space. And I just, I'm not going to be the one. The council wants to do that. I will impose their, I will execute their policy. The, the, not just the 14 neighbors, but the community, because we all know about precedent. They want to start with that kind of building. I will support that. But for right now, I'm not going to be the first. And the last thing I want to say is to raise something that I rarely try not to raise. But, you know, we start digging and doing all these basements. I, I really wonder about CECLA and I really wonder about any kind of accumulative impact of doing this kind of underground and this kind of development. You know, and I know we always do the exemption, ah, it's just one house, but at some point in time, it's not just one house. And so I think building like this could, could set other different and difficult kind of precedents. So I may be the minority, but I'm no.
Thank you. Um, Vice Chair Brody?
Yeah, I take a different point of view. First of all, it's a one-story ranch in the lot size, certainly in support of a home of 3,700 square feet. It's really comes down to how it's implemented. And the concerns the last time was, it was kind of a half-baked application. And here we have a material board landscaping plans and we could really see what's going on here. I second the concern of Commissioner Wright about the basement. I really, you know, I'm concerned when I see those things because I really don't believe that we've addressed the issues that are really part and parcel of, of basement construction and in this community. So that's a negative with regard to evaluating this, but all in all, I would support it based upon the fact that I don't believe it's incompatible. I don't believe it's overwhelming for the neighborhood. And I think the design is compatible and it works.
Thank you. I am pretty much in the middle of all of the commissioners' comments. And I also am not supportive of the precedence it sets with regards to the basement and the space. I'm, first, let me open by saying I so appreciate the work that the applicant, the architect did to incorporate a lot of our comments and to include a landscape plan and to look at the maximum square footage and to, you know, try, try their hardest to wo- wo- work so hard on this application that is before us. And I very much appreciate that. I more than likely will be supporting this project because I think on what is shown at the street level and what is street-facing, what is public-facing is compatible. And what is street-facing, what is public-facing is compatible to the neighborhood. And I would reiterate the comments that Commissioner Wright talked about. With regards to the basement space. And I think that there is a conversation that city council needs to have with regards to moving forward with using basement. Subterranean areas is our livable space. I think city council needs to start having a conversation about that and, and direct us with how to continue to proceed. My concerns are more from the standpoint of fire safety and earthquake safety. I'm certain that architects and engineers have accounted for all of that. But you know, the reality is, and something that we don't talk about often, is that. There is a very likely chance that we are going to have a very massive earthquake soon. And I, you know, I think about that in terms of our structures. And how having subterranean utilities, what, how, what is that impact? And I think that we need to have more of an evaluation of that. I also am not a fan, similar to Commissioner Wright, of going to the maximum square footage. Granted, I will also argue because it's subterranean, it is not visible. But that was the one aspect of this application that does seem to not have been altered and taken into. Our, you know, our notes were not considered with regards to that when this was first presented to us. So all of that being said, I. I think with the other commissioners, it, it, this is something that I could support. And I would like to request that city council start looking at. Subterranean developments and, and how we should proceed with those, how we should think about those. Are there any other comments from the commissioners before I ask for a motion? So given that, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approved design review case number DR two-two-dash-one-four at two-seven-six-five Canterbury Road.
And do I have a second?
My second.
Thank you. And can we have a, a vote, please? A roll call on the vote. I don't know how to say that.
Sure. Okay, um, Chair Wu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Dustin?
He's not voting.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. I'm sorry. Commissioner Wright?
No.
Okay, and then alternate Commissioner Okasaki?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes four-one.
Thank you. Before we move on to agenda item three, I just want to make sure that Commissioner Dustin has a chance to log back on. I did take the, and there you are, Commissioner Dustin. I took the liberty of texting him to let him know we were ready. Staff, can we please move on to agenda item number three with the staff report?
Hi, Alicia Whitfling. Give me one moment. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so the project you have in front of you is a conditional use permit. It's number CUP twenty-one dash oh-seven and variance number twenty-two dash oh-two. And it's for two-four-six-one Mission Street. This is for a site that's commonly known as AppSar Coffee. So pursuant to city code, AppSar requests to provide onsite sales and consumption of alcoholic beverages. Which is for City San Marino is actually beer and wine. And it's as an ancillary use, meaning it's, it's in conjunction with the current use to an existing restaurant in the C-one zone. AppSar Coffee currently serves topless coffee and pastries and plans to serve full meals in the near future. Additionally, the applicant is seeking a variance in accordance with city code to locate the proposed use within five hundred feet of an existing establishment. That offers onsite sales and consumption of alcoholic beverages. There are no proposed alterations or exterior, sorry, exterior alterations or interior alterations to the building. This is strictly for a ancillary use. The site is currently zoned as C-one. The property was built in twenty-twenty. And the business has been there since twenty-twenty-one. They are currently open from six AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday, and then seven AM to five PM on Sunday. The surrounding uses are commercial on the east, west, and south portions. And there is residential adjacent to the north. So. The, this started when in the twenty-twenty-one, the applicant had consulted with city staff about the possibility of including beer and wine. For their incoming restaurant use. The restaurant would serve meals. And based on city's recent initiative to bring about an attractive and complimentary business district. We thought it was consistent with the findings outlined in the city's economic development action plan. Staff encouraged the applicant to submit a CUP application requesting the onsite sales and consumption of the, of the alcohol. And waived actually the fees as directed by city council's economic development initiative. And which provided a fee waiver for restaurant uses in twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one. And that program was also extended in twenty-twenty-one, I believe, into twenty-twenty-two. San Marino Cafe was a recent recipient of the fee waiver and that allowed them to expand and survive through the pandemic. In twenty, earlier twenty-twenty-two, so March of this year, staff informed the applicant. That the proposed request was actually in conflict with a portion of the city code. Which requires that an establishment offering onsite sales and consumption of alcoholic beverages be located. A minimum of five hundred feet from another establishment offering the same service. So therefore, and that, that is actually the San Marino Cafe, which is located a hundred and seventy feet from the, the location that's requesting the, the new use. Based on that, the applicant has requested an approval of a variance to allow for that sale of beer and wine onsite. The, just to give, I guess, a little bit more information about the license that, or the use that they're requesting. It's comparable to the license, that's a Title forty-one license. And that would be attained by the Department of Alcohol Beverages, Alcohol Beverage Control. And it's similar to what's already being, similar, it's actually the same type of license that Julienne, which is also on Mission Street. And San Marino Cafe currently hold on the same street. There are conditions that go with that license as put on by the state. So this type of license distilled, distilled spirits may not be on the premise. Meaning like they can't serve brandy, they can't serve rum, they can cook with it, they can't serve. They must operate and maintain the licensed premises as a bona fide eating place, so they can't turn it into a bar. They must maintain a suitable kitchen facility and must make actual and substantial sales of meals for consumption on the premises. And minors are allowed on the premises. So just like you could take your kids to probably San Marino Cafe, whether you want to or not, maybe you want a nice. Sorry, I have a ten-year-old and thirteen-year-old. You know, you, you can take your kids with you. Minors are allowed on the premises. Okay, so currently the location is identified in the city's economic development action plan. And the type of business that they operate is consistent with the findings outlined in that plan. The plan wants business eateries, and this is a business eatery. The property checked, as proposed, would have conditions that would be put on it as part of the approval. Those have been listed in the staff report. Those conditions and the project itself were reviewed by the Santa Monica, Santa Monica, sorry. One year, and I haven't done that once since, oh, San Marino Police Department reviewed the project. They found a project to be fine with the conditions that were, were being proposed. Those conditions are codified actually in, in the city code. And you can see Santa Mon, the San Marino Police Department's comments and concerns and how they felt they were addressed in the. One condition that we would ask to be added to date, as it was left out by accident, was that alcohol services be restricted. For daily, that's Monday through Friday, between the hours eleven AM and ten PM. Sorry, let me rephrase that. It would be restricted Friday and Saturday, eleven AM to twelve AM. That's what's the city code. And then all other days between the hours of eleven AM and ten PM. The applicant has indicated that he would like to stay open until eight PM, once his business is able to support it. And then just a quick word about the variance. There are limited sites available in the city for these type of uses. The economic development action plan identifies the need for this type of use. And the planning commission here has the opportunity to make findings on the variance because of the, the conflict between the two. So today, the recommendation from staff, and I'm trying to just make sure I get to the right place on that. You're with me. Okay, so the recommendation, if the planning commission agrees, is to approve the conditional use permit. And the variance with the following actions. Determine that, that the project, based on the whole of the record, is exempt from CEQA pursuant to a class one and a class three, class one. CE, and there's no substantial evidence demonstrating that an exception to, an exemption applies. That the planning commission and the exercise of its independent judgment make the findings listed on the attached resolution. And that the planning commission approved conditional use permit twenty-one oh-seven, a variance number twenty-two oh-two. With the, which are subject to the attached conditions that are exhibit A of the resolution. And also the added condition about the hours that I mentioned earlier. Staff is now available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Oh, thank you so much. Are there questions for staff, Vice Chair Brody?
Yes, I do have one, Alicia. Right next to. The applicant's establishment is a pizzeria, but a kind of an upscale pizzeria from what I understand. Are they expected to be applicants for alcohol beverage permits as well?
They have not provided us, I think, with information that they're pursuing an application for that. So I can't say that they are planning on it, because I don't have prior knowledge of it. The question about whether they would, would you, we grant them one, they would be subject to the same process and the same review. And we would have to take that into, the proximity at that point also into consideration.
Okay, do you know, I think they're in San Francisco. Do you know if they serve beer and wine up there?
I'm sorry, I can actually, I can actually interrupt as well. They are not in San Francisco. They are in Los Angeles and Tokyo. And they do serve very select IPAs and canned wines from a company called Nomadica. At, in their, in their Los Angeles location. I don't know about their Tokyo location.
And they used to have a location in Long Beach and they did also serve beer and wine there while it was open.
Yeah, again, it is like very specific canned, canned wine, for what it's worth. Everything that they serve was, is canned, I believe.
Thank you. Appreciate it, commissioners.
Are there any other questions for staff?
I, I have quite a few, but I thought I'd let the others take a crack at it first before.
Can I also add that we did receive also two, sorry, four more letters of support that were. As you know, the letters had a form kind of body to them. We received four more of those, one from another business owner in the Mission District. And then three from residents in the surrounding area.
Thank you. Commissioner Dustin, I don't see any other questions being asked, so why don't you?
I'll just ask everybody's indulgence here. I, I didn't do my usual organization beforehand. So my questions are all scattered between different documents, so it might take me a little longer. My first question, in your presentation, you made a comment about. Something to the effect of liquor licenses in San Marino, meaning beer and wine. Does that mean that we do not? Either by the ordinance prevents a full liquor license, meaning beer, wine, and spirits? Or we just, as a matter of policy, choose not to approve those?
The way the policy, the section on onsite alcohol beverages is written, it's limited to the sale of beer and wine.
So, can I, I'm so, so sorry, Commissioner Dustin, because along these lines, I have been told. Because I do sit on economic development, prior to the current staff that is present in the city. I have always been told that we actually have two full liquor licenses that we are able to grant. As long as one is on one side of San Marino Avenue and the, meaning the west side and the east side of San Marino Avenue. We have two full liquor licenses that we are able to grant without having to go through LA County.
Bye. I mean, I'm trying to pull up the code right now, so I can take a look at the section itself. And I apologize for not having this up before, but. All right, give me one moment.
And it may not even be, I mean, depending on what Commissioner Dustin was gonna, his follow-up question, it may not even be relevant to this case, but.
It's, it's not applicable to this particular case, but when she mentioned that, I just was curious and. I just want to know, should I stop hoping that one will ever be allowed in the city?
Okay.
Commissioner, Commissioner Dustin. Chair Boyle is correct. A full line of alcohol is permitted on one side of San Marino and only one on the other side of San Marino. So that could be up for consideration if used where to come in.
Okay. So let me get back to my, my other questions that are more pertinent to this case. Some of them actually are just for my education and maybe the education of anybody listening. But so, is it typical that restaurants first apply just to serve food? And then later request a beer and wine sales? Because I noticed that that's what's happening here with this applicant. Does, is that typical for like when, when San Marino Cafe and Marketplace opened? Did they do that similarly, that they opened first for food and then later requested the expansion?
I cannot comment to that. Sorry.
I, I, I can comment on that. Based on my experience, it's normal. And I think a lot of it has to do with how long it takes, one, for the state to process it. And two, typically you need the approval from the local jurisdiction before you are granted the ABC license. So typically, it, it does work that way.
And I would say from my years in the restaurant industry, Commissioner Dustin, it just really depends on what the establishment is. You know, it, from the get-go, like many restaurants, they obviously know that they want to have a very in-depth. Wine program to coincide with their food. And so it just, but I believe in, I would say. What I've noticed in San Marino is it does happen to be, you know, you first do the restaurant, then you do the.
That makes sense, I would expect, especially if it was a much larger, more, you know, financially healed organization. They may just choose to get it from, from the outset. But this, that was just sort of in relation to Howard's inquiry. Because I was surprised when I read in there that, that the pizza place had not applied for beer and wine sales. When that's, that's clearly a, a part of their business model, if you look at their other locations. But anyway. So my next question has to do with condition number eight. That is on page ninety-three of the. Packet, and it's page six of the agenda. The establishment shall not provide advertisements promoting or indicating the onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages. Is that something that is a standard condition for all establishments that have beer and wine permits in the city? Because I know there are other establishments on Mission that do promote their sales. And I just, it seems like it would be unfair to hold this applicant to that if, if that's not a standard thing.
That language is, I'm sorry, go ahead, Alicia.
No, I, I defer to you.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's actually not a standard condition. It's actually a requirement in the code. So if any other business is conducting that, we obviously can take a look at that. So we're not holding this applicant to a different standard than anyone else.
Okay, that, that would be my concern. I don't want them to be unduly burdened with something that other people are not burdened with. Okay, my next question is maybe one for the city attorney. I need some help understanding in the, in the. I think, I believe it's the findings for the variance. Finding number three speaks of a reasonable use. And finding five speaks of a practical use. Can you help me understand the difference? Or is there a difference between reasonable use and practical use of the property?
You're muted, Steve.
Unmute, okay, I'm unmuted now. Well, you have a lot of discretion whenever the standard is reasonable use, and I'm gonna look at five. You're looking at five, condition five for the variants?
Yes. So one, my read on it is number three, finding three says if, if if denying the variants would deny them the reasonable use of the property, you shouldn't do it. And number five is saying, if denying the variants would deny them the practical use of the property, you shouldn't do it. And I'm just trying to determine, is there a difference between practical and reasonable?
There's a reasonableness element included in five. It says it would unreasonable and a deprivation of
Yeah.
illegal use of the property to deny such variants. So there is some, and some discretion built in there for you to make the finding. So you're gonna have to decide if this is would be unreasonable deprivation of practical use of, you're gonna have to determine what that practical use of the property is.
Okay, so this takes me to my next question, also having to do with finding five for the variants. Why do we need a finding for number five? Because the way I read it, it's saying unless this is a variance that has to do with a fence, a yard setback or bulk variance, it's not necessary to make a finding on this point. Or am I not reading that correctly?
So you make the finding under five, except whenever the application involves a fence, yard, setback or bulk variance. That's, then it should not be necessary to make a finding on that point. So I do think you need to make a finding on that point, because I don't think that exception applies in this situation.
Yeah, the, the finding language itself was confusing, so though, I, I don't blame you, but.
So I got it backwards.
Right, staff, right, staff read it the same way that, that Steve read it, which is that you have to make the finding unless it was a fence, a yard or a setback issue.
All right. And then going to the, the issue of the police department identified concern. Again, the wording was a little difficult for me, and I just want to make sure I understand what the concern is. Are, are they saying that they're concerned that young people may go to Absara? Oh, no, I'm sorry, that they're concerned that the pizza place is gonna attract young people? And they're gonna hang out there because pizza and young people go together. But now there's, Absara has outdoor dining in close proximity and that may allow access to alcohol? Or is it, when they're talking about outdoor dining, I'm not, it's not clear what establishment they're talking about. Is it the outdoor dining at Absara? Or is it the outdoor dining that may presumably be at the pizza place?
All right, thank you for the question, and I can understand the confusion. So the, when staff approached the San Marino Police Department, they had identified that the pizza place, and I guess they had known it just like most of you, about the pizza place itself. That there might be some, some attraction to the place because of the ownership. I believe there's a professional skateboarder who
Right.
part of that ownership, and so minors might be attracted to that. Currently, Aspar, Absara, I'm sorry, has outdoor dining. So the, the question was, or the concern was, that there could be some access to alcohol, easy, you know, from the, from the minors hanging out there with, at the pizza place. But again, because, you know, the, the staff is being trained per the ABC requirements. Because there are conditions already in the municipal code that would give the city a two-way mechanism to bring this back to the planning commission for consideration if there were continuous issues with the, the sales of alcohol and the consumption onsite.
Okay, I just, you know, if they're saying that they're concerned that having alcohol sales right across the patio from the pizza place might be a concern. I mean, I'm fully expecting that there to be alcohol sales at the pizza place at some point, so that seemed a little inconvenient to me, but.
Again, we, we, we don't know if the pizza place will be coming in for a, a alcohol-related use.
Correct, correct.
They do, obviously we'll address that when that comes in, but we were thinking ahead, just, you know, obviously in, in case they don't or they do.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
May I make a comment?
Of course you can.
Thank you, Commissioner Dustin.
Yeah.
That, which is, I didn't ask them as many questions as I do before the meetings. And just to, to some of those questions, I think, you know, would have been, could have been cleared up or whatever. And just to move the meeting along, since our first item without you was very quick, that was a joke. Just, just a suggestion, just a suggestion.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Okay. If there are any, is, I don't believe there are any other questions from the commissioners for staff at this time. So I'd like to open it to the applicant or the applicant's representative, and I do see the applicant on the line. So Raju, I, if I'm okay, if it is okay for me to call you by your first name?
Yes.
Please give your presentation with regards to your application.
Okay, can you guys hear me properly?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I opened the day after Thanksgiving. When I designed and planned and executed the whole work originally and presented it to the city, it included a top spot. So right off the bat, I knew I was going to do this, so it was there all along, even before the adjacent space was leased to a pizza place. So I, I think there is a, a understanding between the landlord and the pizza guy that he would not be and, and I can attest to that, but he probably won't be having any alcohol. And that's the first thing. Second thing is the kind of alcohol I'm going to serve eventually, if I get the permit to do that, would be sort of a very high-end craft beer, a single brand. And then a very select, sort of exotic wine that I seriously don't think for, first, the kids would, could afford it. And second, if, my point is, if they really want to get alcohol, there are cheaper places walking distance from this place. And they can get, you know, it just doesn't make sense that, that that I, and any eating, eating establishment, you're going to see young people come to that place. And it's our responsibility to make sure that if they are under twenty-one, twenty-one, we check IDs, of course, that we do not serve them. So, and the shop slash restaurant that I built, I built it, I live walking distance from here. And I built it to serve the local community. I biked by this location many, many times over the past three years. And I, and I thought this would be an ideal place to have a community-oriented eating place in the evening. If you ever come to this area past four o'clock, it's dead. There's nothing here. There's nothing for both San Marino residents and South Pass residents who live within a radius of one mile to go to. San Marino Cafe is closed past four o'clock and Julienne's closed. So I, I see right now with just the coffee and sandwiches, I've created a connecting place for local community. I haven't seen one single neighbor that has discouraged me from having beer and wine. The other thing I wanted to say is, I like to thank the city staff for helping me out. They went above board to get all this into the planning commission meeting tonight. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. What will be your hours, Raju?
As you know, I open at six in the morning, but I'm here from five for people to come and grab coffee. I plan to close at eight in the evening.
Are there any other, any other questions?
I have a question?
Yes, Commissioner Wright.
Thank you. My question's about the music that a couple of your supporters mentioned. And I just wanted to know when, where, how?
It's, it's a community-related music. So Saturday afternoons from three to six PM right now, I have sort of, it's almost like an open mic situation. And primarily kids from around the area and some older adult-seasoned singers, singers, singer-songwriters, musicians, this particular week, weekend, a Saturday, I have a a twelve-year-old cello player from San Marino coming to play cello. And then a writer, she writes books, and she's written a lot of short stories, kids. And she's gonna come and read short stories. So it's that kind of music. I, it's pop music, it's not, it's not like loud drums and all those kind of stuff. It's a very quiet acoustic jazz piano, those kind of stuff. So it's, it's a very mellow, just to get people to be comfortable. And also to showcase young people's talents in the area. I had, three weeks ago, I had a contingent of twelve violinists, all under fifteen years old, performing. So that's who I have come and play on Saturdays.
So once a week, for now, anyway?
I, I've, I've done it every Saturday since January, first week of January. And I'm booked all the way through end of July.
And where do they perform, inside, outside, both?
Inside, inside the coffee shop. And the, the front of the coffee shop can be open in full. It's a, it's a glass accordion door.
Yeah, thank you. And just, this just came to me, would you be all right if we imposed a condition that restricted your hours to eight, eight PM for alcohol?
Yeah. I can do the last call at eight, past that, because even now, on Saturdays, past six o'clock, customers are sitting, I stay until the last person leaves. And it's just coffee, and they're sitting, just talking to each other and having a, it's, it's neighbors. They walk home. Most of my customers are walking customers, they come down to the shop, you know. So I, I'll probably do the last call at eight, I mean, I will do the last call at eight o'clock, seven fifty-five and close it at eight o'clock, but it'd be hard to chase them away from the tables. Okay. Any other questions?
Commissioner Okazaki, you unmuted yourself? Oh, so I thought maybe that meant you had a question? No. Okay, are there any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, seeing none, I actually was gonna start with you, Commissioner Okazaki. So if you could unmute yourself and give any feedback?
I've been to the restaurant, have eaten there, had coffee there. In fact, the police department had, had their meeting last month there, in which the community members came. So it's a very popular place for the community, so I think beer and wine with the top pots in the evenings, after, after hours, after the San Marino Cafe closes, I think it would be a good place for the neighborhood folks to walk over to and enjoy themselves and to congregate and enjoy themselves. So I would personally support, you know, I realize that if restricting it to five hundred feet, it's not a big block, it's not a long block. So we have one, we have three facilities with beer and wine. One is Julienne's, the other one is San Marino Cafe, and this will be the third one. And they're in separate blocks, they're not next to each other. So I, I, I think it's a reasonable request to allow the beer and wine at Raju's place. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright.
Yes, I, I agree. I support the findings in the report, both as to the CUP and the variants. I think as to the CUP, this is consistent with what the Economic Development Action Plan is talking about. Something that will add to our community, something we need in our community. So I think it would be a, a, a good addition to that kind of neighborhood for now. And perhaps a little bit more with South Pass and Pasadena, but with that use. As to the variants, yeah, it's a different block from the San Marino Cafe. I'm not sure about the hours of the San Marino Cafe. I was around there. Granted, it was a weekday, I think it was three-ish maybe. And they were, they were stacking chairs, so I'm not exactly sure what their hours are and what, and what conflict there would be anyway. But I do think that even though over-concentration makes sense from the standpoint of potential land use impacts, if too many uses with alcohol are together, that brings, no, that brings trash, that brings, et cetera. I don't think that's really applicable here with this kind of distance and the kind of uses there. The one thing I would ask, oh, and I guess I got to give, you know, me and my pet peeves, I do have to say a lot of those conditions, I believe, are unenforceable, but, you know, I can, yeah. So, so they can't sell before eleven, who's gonna be there to find that out? The thirty percent gross receipts? Who's gonna go studying that to see if they're really doing that? This, this owner seems very good, and a lot of these conditions are just as good as the owner. And whether he, she or they will, will actually follow them. So I, I really hope that if we do grant this, you will follow those conditions, because I think a lot of them, you know, some of them are ABC, a lot of them are just very difficult for cities to enforce. But I'm, I'm okay to try them. And with that, colleagues, I would ask you what you think about, I'm not sure what I think, what you think about conditions related to hours and music? Whether you think we should restrict this to eight PM last call, just put that in, again, enforceable. Because, because right now, I think they're allowed, oh, you're gonna have to correct me, staff, I'm already forgetting. But I think they're allowed to go by code to ten PM on weeknights and midnight on Saturdays, Fridays, Saturdays, I think that's right. And so they could just do that, unless we either impose something different with a reason, and I think there'd have to be a reason, since that is code. Or we, or we ask for them to come back if they want to expand their hours. That's something I think we could do too, or ask them to go to staff. So that's one thing I want to ask colleagues about, how you feel about that? And the other thing is the music, whether we want to impose any kind of condition related to music, which of course can become, doesn't sound like it has, but can become also if only a nuisance impact, it is backing up to a neighborhood. So with those two comments, asking my colleagues, just open to your, your thoughts, I would, I would, could support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Chang?
Oh yeah, I'm supportive of the proposal. I think the business has been a really positive business on the, on the block and mission. I think this is gonna be a positive for the community and, and all the patrons of the business. To Commissioner Wright's comments, I businesses are hard enough to do, make, to survive and to further restrict their ability to do so, whether it's having, you know, entertainment, live entertainment. And, you know, I don't think there's been any issues raised to the city of nuisance or disruption. And clearly, he's very selective of who he allows to this establishment. You know, if some, if twelve violinists bother someone, then it'll bother them no matter what it is, right? So I, I would highly, you know, be against any type of restricting on, on his ability to have that. I think it's, it allows for, you know, local talent is also, you know, he's, he's bringing in folks from the community. I think it's, it allows for, you know, local town is also, you know, he's, he's bringing in folks from the community to come and perform. And I think to try to restrict arts in our community is, is very, very, it flies against what the community is about. So.
Just to be clear, I was talking about any kind of restriction that would, that would be, have to do with land use impacts, like having to do with the, the noise level or, or something like that, not, not saying no music. No, I think music's great too, I agree.
Yeah, and again, I'll, I'll bring you the perfect example. I haven't had dinner. I would love to go grab dinner at, you know, the applicant's restaurant right after this, and a tapa and a, a glass of wine. So it's already eight eleven. So if he, so happens that he's busy enough and his hours extend to nine, and that's going to work for everyone sitting here in this meeting, to go as a group, to go have dinner at his place and have a glass of wine, I think we shouldn't restrict that. So I am against any type of restriction. I think the code already stipulates what it is for ten o'clock on a weekday and midnight on a weekend. And if, I would just hope he's as successful and busy enough to have patrons at that hour, but not, you know, at the, not the impact of the, of the neighborhood, obviously. But, you know, I, I think it's all for, for a positive improvement and benefit to the city. So I am supportive of that. And I don't think any further restrictions beyond what is required per the code or per A B C license regulations imposes is required.
Thank you. Commissioner Dustin?
Yeah. I hope I didn't cause Raju any undue concern with all my questions, because I certainly didn't mean to imply that I was not for this. You might not recognize me, but I've actually been coming to your business several times a week since you opened. I'm usually masked, though. And I really appreciate that you're open late, because I like to drive over there in the afternoon, get a cup of coffee, it's a nice, and I don't live locally, I'm on, I can't be further away. I'm on the complete east side of town. But it's a great break for me to get away from work, take a drive through a peaceful community, get a cup of coffee. By the time I get back, I'm ready to finish my day at work. So you do have customers from, from far away.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I completely agree with Commissioner Chang. I would love to see this place open even later. And if they're ever open late enough to be there for a glass of wine after our planning commission meeting, Kevin, I'll meet you there. I do, I guess the only concern I have, and it's not really a concern with whether or not to grant this request for the C U P or the variants, but it's this, this idea of density, you know, Mission District just has a much better presence of place than the Huntington Business Districts. Mostly because it's so compact and it does connect very well with the people who live there. And as a result, I think it's natural to see restaurants gravitate towards that type of a district as opposed to Huntington. You just see businesses struggle on Huntington. And I would hate to see, you know, I, I, I fully anticipate that other restaurants are going to open in this area, and they're going to want beer and wine permits. And I would hate to see them prejudiced in their applications just because we sort of hit a certain density. So I think that's just something that we need to sort of keep in mind as a city as we, as we move forward. I also would agree with, you know, in terms of Commissioner Wright's questions, I, I absolutely agree with Kevin again. It is, it is hard enough to run a business. I think to make the entrepreneur have to police a separate serving hour as opposed to what's in ordinance, that's, I think, just an undue burden that I wouldn't want to impose on somebody who's just trying to get their, their feet on the ground. Also, as to the noise, I, I realize, you know, I don't live in the area, so, you know, it's no skin off my nose, I guess. But I, I don't think it's a big concern from what I've heard him describe. And there are ordinances already that address noise and amplified music, outdoor music. So if it did become something that the neighbors found objectionable, there are avenues open to them, I think, to, to protest that. So I, I wouldn't be in favor of, of imposing any additional restrictions. That's, that's it. I'm, I'm in support of this. I just hope it can stay open later than eight.
Thank you. Commissioner, Vice Chair Brody?
Yeah, I read the police department's view of the entirety of the program and incorporating a lot of the thoughts that were expressed by Commissioner Chang and Wright and Dustin. I don't think there should be a cap on serving, whether it be at six o'clock, seven o'clock, eight o'clock, or if he extends the hours to nine o'clock. But I do have a concern that there should be no service of alcoholic beverages as the police department has recommend, recommended prior to eleven A M. Other than that, I have no problem with how long he entertains a dinner guest. Oftentimes, I recall my experience in New York, they had closing hours, but people hung out there, sometimes forty-five minutes after closing, and the entrepreneur wasn't throwing them out the door. So I would think that this concept that we're developing on Mission, on the Mission Street, that Raju is, is definitely contributing to this village, small village concept, very similar to what we see up north in, in some of the communities, Carmel and the like. I, I think that's something that we should be encouraging. And, and Raju, let me say, I've been at your establishment. I think it's an asset to our community, and I do support this application.
Thank you, everyone. I am in complete agreement and alignment with my fellow commissioners. As somebody who is so grateful for the fact that at five forty-five, when I am leaving for work, I can sometimes stop and get a cup of coffee, at five forty-five A M. And know that Raju and his staff are there with a hot Spanish tortilla and cup of coffee. I'm very, very, I'm very grateful to Apsara's presence on Mission. I think my observation is that Raju has shown that he cares about our city and our community. And I don't think that he would ever do something that would not be, I'm saying this in regards to the music playing the later hours. I think that he's very sensitive to what our community needs and would like. And if there was concerns by the, you know, surrounding neighborhood, neighbors about music being played too loud, he would adjust, you know, everything accordingly. That's, that is what I've witnessed and observed by his character and his integrity. Similar to the other commissioners, I am in full support of having, I mean, this might be the very first dinner location that exists in San Marino. I'm just going to leave that there. And that's wonderful to me. I can't think of another place that serves beyond five o'clock. I would say to the city staff that in terms of the no, I, I'm, I, in terms of the no advertisement as well to serving alcoholic beverages before eleven A M. I understand that we have A B C requirements and San Marino requirements, and I certainly do not want to get our other establishments in the city in trouble. But I would argue that if Apsara is going to have to follow certain rules, then we need to look at our other establishments for their serving of mimosas and the like at brunch and advertising via social media. As Commissioner Dustin shared, that if we are requiring one person to act in a certain way, I hope that we are asking all of our businesses to act in a certain way. That is the only fair thing to do. So, so unfortunately, that is left to staff to regulate. And then, I guess I don't have anything else to say, except that I fully support this. I don't think that there needs to be a restriction in terms of hours serving alcohol or music in the, in the later part of the day. And also, as part of the economic development team, this is one of the things that we were really pushing for as a group to encourage businesses coming in here. And I think that, that we have seen on Mission that, you know, there is a very successful business model where that is becoming a very thriving envi, you know, community that people are going to and experiencing, and they're not leaving the city and they're, you know, they're interacting with their fellow residents. And I think that that is something that we have long wanted to achieve, and it's, and it's being achieved. So unless there are any other comments from my commissioners, I will welcome a motion.
Thank you. I would just say thank you to everybody for your comments on my, my question. Very helpful.
Yeah.
You convinced me.
I'd like to motion to approve a conditional use permit, C U P twenty-one dash zero seven and variance number V A R twenty-two dash O two for twenty-four sixty-one Mission Street with the conditions outlined by staff in the agenda report.
Well, and just, just to clarify that, well, it includes the recommended sequoia action as well?
Yes, as noted.
Could we add to that, John? The proviso that no alcoholic beverages prior to eleven o'clock, which is before lunch. And I think it's quite reasonable to do that.
I, I would, I would accept that friendly amendment.
Okay, and then I'd second it.
And then, oh, yes?
For clarity, that one last item, can you repeat that?
That no alcoholic beverages would be served prior to eleven A M.
But that is part of the, the conditions, correct?
I believe that was one of the standard conditions.
Yeah. Right, the, the one, the, the one that we requested was that the establishment should now serve and sell alcoholic beverages later than twelve o'clock midnight on Fridays and Saturdays, and no later than ten o'clock P M. On all other days. That was the one that staff requested be included. Again, that's already a requirement, but we would like to include it in the resolution.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah, but it was the, I believe the police depart, our police department had the recommendation of no.
And it is, it is one of the conditions of approval.
Yeah.
Actually, I don't think it is.
Wait, actually, I don't think it is. If you look at the, you may look at it.
I didn't.
Right. So part of the staff report noted that the, that condition was left out on the standard conditions. It is part of the city code, but we are asking that you do adopt it as part of your mission today.
So what you're saying is city code is that they cannot serve alcohol prior to eleven A M. And what we, and what we are also considering is that they cannot serve alcohol beyond ten P M. in the weekday and twelve P M. on the weekends.
And that one is a requirement as well.
Okay.
Well, that would be twelve A M. on the weekends.
Correct.
Oh, I'm sorry, correct. I apologize. I apologize. So if that's all in the city code, do we have to call that out in our motion?
We, we would prefer just so that the applicant is fully, fully aware.
Okay, fantastic. So Commissioner Dustin, did you want to?
I, I would be happy to add that. I just, at this point, I'm not really sure how to say that.
I, I, I would recommend that you make the motion to include staff's recommendations, which were captured by, by our narrative.
So I'd like to, I'd like to amend my motion to include staff recommendations regarding additional conditions.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. And then can we have a, a vote, please?
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brody?
Yes.
Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Mission Carriers five zero.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So moving on, I guess we have the item number four?
Madam Chair, the city clerk who will be conducting the presentation needs a little bit more time. Staff suggest if you can move up items five and six before items four?
Sure. So, sorry, my computer constantly is shrinking the, the, the document so that I can't read it. I constantly have to bring it back up to a hundred percent visibility. So can we please move on to item number five? The resolution of find, yeah, staff's report?
So this project was brought before the previous planning commission meeting and was voted five oh to deny. And this resolution is being brought back before you to confirm that denial. It was noticed that we left out the no's in the last page of the resolution. So if you agree to adopt this resolution, that will be fixed once it gets signed by Chair Boyle, that all the commissioners voted. I'm sorry, they voted for the denial, so that would be fixed once the official resolution is signed. So staff is recommending the adoption of the denial resolution.
Move to adopt the resolution?
Second.
And can we have a?
Comment?
Oh, yes.
You know, the, the, the comment is that on section two, we, we, the staff states that that the, the polls will be detrimental to the property and improvements in the neighborhood. And that as the neighborhood does not have front yard parking as part of the neighborhood character for the, I can't read it. Boy, I need my glasses, excuse me. For the reasons stated above. The, the point that I was trying to make at the last month meeting is that this statement is not true in a sense that when you have parking garage on the front, you know, on that street, as I saw, I saw the neighborhood with cars parked on, outside of the garage. So the cars were parked there, you know, and, and, and that happens all over the place throughout the city. And I, 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 I just don't agree with that statement that I mean, it's not a designated parking, it's a driveway to get to the, to the garage. But people leave their car there, several cars along that street on both sides. Because a driveway, just because a driveway, I mean, not, not the driveway, but just because the garage is, because you have a driveway and a garage on that side, people just leave their cars in that area. And, and that, so they're parking in their front yard. And so this is what this owner wanted to do. Because access and circulation to the garage on the Colorado side, he felt was very dangerous for him and particularly to his child. I just wanted to make, I don't know if you could soften that language or whatever, because I know that I was overvoted on, and I overvoted, but I didn't even vote on that. But anyway, I, I am concerned that the, the rigidness of that statement is not totally true.
I, I mean, staff can correct me, but I believe this is standard language that needs to be used in. Staff, do you have any comments?
Right, so.
Commissioner Okazaki, I'm so sorry, can you, your, yourself? Thank you. Thank you.
Right, so i- i- if you read the uh finding staff prepared it. I- i- it, it starts. Uh with basically restating the question and how it's being met. So it's not that um. Uh staff, uh. Not that staff generated that on its own, it's just merely uh responding to how the narrative, how the finding is written.
Well, I see as you're going right.
But the finding is not, is not true to the picture or what you see out there. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I, we're not, we can't, we.
We can't read debate this, unfortunately.
But as far as whether the, the finding accurately reflects what we said. I see your point about uh front yard parking. Um I would see it a little differently that yes, it's another one of my pet peeves. Everybody parks in their driveway overnight, but it is in their driveway leading to their garage. This is something different that we were talking about, which was parking in the front yard that doesn't lead to a garage. And if we want to make that kind of a distinction, because that is what we were talking about. Um I certainly have no objection to making that more specific, but um. But it, it is front, but, but that is what we said. We don't think that front yard parking that does not lead to a garage is not in that neighborhood. I don't know.
So I, I, yeah, so I guess the question is, and this is directed to staff, like at this point, to make that nuance in this document. Do we have that leeway or is this the document that we have to approve and? Review and approve?
Uh I, I, I would ask the, the uh city attorney to chime in here, but I believe that. Um you have the ability to direct staff to amend the finding.
Yeah, I.
To reflect what we said.
Can, can, can we just quickly poll commissioners? I mean, I, I don't have a problem with the way this is worded. I think it accurately reflects my understanding of the situation. And it. It accurately reflects our decision.
I agree.
So do I.
I'm fine with it either way.
Agreed.
Okay, so given that. Is there? Uh Commissioner Wright, I believe you made the motion to approve. This document as is.
Yeah, wait for a second.
I'll.
Is there a second? Okay. And can we please have a roll call of our vote?
Yes. Uh Commissioner Bo.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, yes.
Yes.
Okay, um Vice Chair Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yeah.
So Commissioner. I'm sorry, did I say something else? Uh Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Okay, so then that's a five oh vote to approve the denial resolution.
Thank you. Um so uh Director Figaro, are you ready to give your director's report? I mean, I'm being sensitive to time, so I know you have the community development directors report. And I don't know if you want to give that to us now, and then we will move on to the training or.
Uh I, I, I can give it now since uh our city clerk still has not logged in, so. Uh.
Okay.
I just want to give a, a couple of notes to. The commission, uh the urban forestry position, which as all of you know is vacant, currently vacant. Uh has been posted uh on the city's website. For uh. I believe it's uh three weeks remaining, um and then so then after that, obviously. Uh hopefully, we can go through the selection process and. Uh hire someone. Currently, we have a consultant arborist. Who has been uh assessing public trees. And as soon as he concludes with that assignment. Uh he will be able to provide some assistance with the. Uh tree applications that we currently have on the docket. Uh the city council on Friday will consider the proposed operating and capital budget. For the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty, twenty three. Uh staff is thankful that uh the city council is considering providing the department with additional resources. Uh so that will be happening this Friday. Um also, uh. The city council liaisons for DRC and planning commission conducted interviews. For members. Uh on Friday, on the same meeting, uh the city council will announce. The uh successful candidates. Uh that kind, that also um. Uh leads me to thank all of you. Uh I think it uh. I think all of you are on some heroes. Uh you don't get the uh. Uh thanks that you deserve. All of you are volunteers. You dedicate your uh time to make the city a better city. And so staff thanks. Uh the time that you invest. And so we are all thankful for all of your contributions. Uh this past year with the housing element. Uh which is still ongoing, but obviously, we, we thank you for all your hard work. Um and uh finally, uh it's a pretty sad moment. Uh. Uh that I have to announce that Alicia is leaving us. Uh Alicia started here sometime last year, I believe it was in June or July. As a part-time senior planner. And she quickly became the only planner. In the face of this department. And she, you know, went through some adverse times here as the only planner. And uh on a personal note, uh she has been. Uh. She has been a reliable source for me uh since I've been here for four months. Uh she's been great. She's been a great mentor to Caminia. And so we're grateful for the time and contribution that Alicia has. Uh expanded here in the city and. Uh I want to let, you know, I, I know that she has a grand amount of respect for all of you. So I want to give her a few minutes here to say her goodbyes before uh the city clerk uh. Presents uh tonight. So with that. Uh we'll see each other next month and uh Alicia, please uh. Take it over.
Uh, thank you. Um tons of funny things. So um I'm sitting here listening. It's, it, I started in May uh last year. Uh expecting to do one thing and um ended up learning a lot. And then I'm hearing that you've been here four months yourself, uh Director Figaro, and I was like, whoa, four months, it just seems like it flew by. Um it's been great to work with all of you. I've actually, um it's, it's, I've learned a lot in this position. I came uh previously from the state of Los Angeles. We are, learn to do one thing and you do one thing really well, and maybe you get lucky and you get to do something else. Um I chose to want to come to a small city and I, this has been a great learning experience for me. And I thank you for the opportunities that you guys have given me. Um I know that you guys have high goals for this city. Uh and um what we hope that we were able to carry out, and I know it was difficult at times, was to, to live up to those goals. Uh you have a great community development director and a wonderful associate planner that are staying on, on the position. Um I have um high respect for them and I know that they will do great things. And also I pulled those goals that you guys bring to the job and to the city. So um thank you guys so much for your leadership, your mentorship, your time, the time that you spend um with uh working on issues. I know you're all volunteers. And I wish you all well in your endeavors and I hope that our paths will cross again someday. So take care.
Alicia, thank you so much for all of your, all of your time and dedication to us. We really appreciate every. I, I hopefully am speaking for all of the commissioners, but we really appreciate all of the hard work you've done for us in the last year. And we are very sorry, I'm very sorry to see you go. So.
Yeah, and, and of all the years to be here, that was a tough one. So. Kudos to you and thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Um. I believe I saw this. Oh, yes, the city clerk is here for uh agenda item number four, our training. So I will, I will leave it to you then, I guess, to train us.
Great, thank you so much. I apologize for getting on a little late. Um I was at an all-day conference today and literally just walked in my door like three minutes ago. So thank you for your patience. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Of a PowerPoint. Okay. Sorry. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and start. So this is a general. Um advisory body training that I'm conducting for every um advisory body within the city. And we kind of, I'm gonna cover three general topics. Um one, the first. Um the first is the roles and responsibilities of advisory body, then we'll go into the Brown Act, and then we'll go into conducting a successful meeting. So first, what is an advisory body? An advisory body is any commission committee board. Or, or any other version of that that advises the city council. Advisor bodies are established by the city council and members are appointed by the city council. In San Marino, members serve between two and four years depending on. The board. Um and then you, there's a two-year break between, um you can serve two consecutive terms, then there'll be a two-year break and you can come back for more. Um terms, all terms now start on June first. Council did um just pass a new ordinance and resolution that created that. Um so this term is just about over um for you guys. Uh the annual recruitment begins in um. April, I'm gonna try and push that back to March because I feel like we need a little bit more time. And then vacant spots are filled as needed. Um each advisory body is five members and they eat, they meet at least monthly. And um quorum is very important. If there's no quorum, then there's no meaning. Um in San Marino, we have five advisory bodies, yourselves, the planning commission, the library board of trustees, the design review committee, the public safety commission, and the recreation commission. What does an advisor body do? So an advisor body is an ear for council. It's another forum for citizens to participate and engage. Um it allows for in-depth analysis of specific issues that maybe, you know, council can't get to with all the. Breath of topics that they're looking at. And that also provides a broad perspective on focused issues because you guys are limited to planning commission type items. Um all of your different perspectives get to be placed onto that focus topic. Um and then they also do act as advisor bodies to the council. Now, there are um two bodies, yourselves and the design review committee. They're also quasi judicial. Because you guys can make um decisions and rulings where the other three bodies are strictly advisory to the city council. What advisory bodies do not do? They do not make citywide policy. They do not direct budget decisions. They do not impact operations directly and they do not direct staff. Um these responsibilities fall either with the city council or with the city manager and the executive team. Member required. So each of you should have taken an oath of office prior to the first meeting um that you had for planning commission. You have to file a form, an FPPC Form seven hundred or a statement of economic interest. Within thirty days of appointment and by April each year. So that's probably where most of you would know me from is each year I send you an email saying, please fill this out. Um for everybody, for all advisory bodies except for you guys, I am the filing officer because your planning commissioners, the state dictates that you actually have to file. Directly with the FPPC. Um and then there's also an ethics training requirement that you need to complete within one year of appointment and it's by annually thereafter. In April, I sent emails out to everybody um asking for you all to complete ethics training or send me a certificate showing that you have completed it within the last two years. So just a reminder, if you still haven't a chance to do that yet, please do that as soon as possible and send me the certificate. It's important to have a good working relationship with your fellow advisory board members. So you always want to show respect for each individual's viewpoint, allow other members to present their views fully. Uh before you make comments on that. Um be open and honest at all times and recognize new members and kind of help them out to see how things work and make them feel welcome. There's also council liaisons. So council liaisons are council members that serve as a liaison between the advisory body. And the council. This helps to better ensure um. To ensure better communication and for council, they can help provide context if you guys need that. They are not members of the advisory body, so they cannot vote, they cannot help to quorum, they don't do any of that. For the planning commission, the delegate is Mayor Jacobowski and the alternate is council member Wong. Staff liaison, that's another important role when it comes to advisory bodies. What do staff liaisons do? They help provide administrative support such as agenda preparation and taking minutes. They ensure meeting compliance that we're following all the procedures that we need to. They can advise members, they can provide technical expertise. They can act as a conduit for communication with council, with other um staff members, with community stakeholders. Um and any decisions that get made from the planning commission or things that rise from the planning commission up to the city council. Your staff liaison would be the one that presents that to the council. And please remember, they do deserve to be treated and respected as professionals. This is their job. Um many of us that um work with advisory bodies. Uh are doing that in addition to our normal duties during the day, so please do keep that in mind. Um what staff liaisons do not do? They do not work for the advisory body. They do not provide full-time support. And they do not provide individual reports, favors, or special consideration to members. So please remember, you can certainly request things of staff, but you cannot direct them. They are not there to specifically work for you or the body. That was pretty quick. Are there any questions? Kind of about general roles and responsibilities?
No, from me.
Okay. All right, then I will move on to the Brown Act. So the Ralph and Brown Act. This is um the laws that create the open and public meetings. Um I'm gonna actually read these two bold statements because I think they're really important. This is the intent of the Brown Act. It is the intent of the law that their actions be taken openly. And that their deliberat- deliberations be conducted openly. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know. And what is not good for them to know. So basically, the heart of it is, all meetings of the legislative body of a local agency shall be open and public. And all persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting of the legislative body of a local agency. All actions of a legislative body shall be taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly. Um I think an, an, an important aspect of this um. That's a little more confusing these days is social media. That's um. Pretty much in every communication, whether it's email, text message, in a meeting in person. If there's three members of an advisory body, that constitutes a meeting. So now you're in. Um you could be in potential violation of the Brown Act. In social media, it's different. It only takes two. So that means if one. Commissioner posts something on Facebook and another goes in there and likes it. That's a violation of the Brown Act. Um so it's better to be safe than sorry and just, you know, refrain from likes and retweets and shares. Of something that um another commissioner may have done.
Christina, Christina, I'm so sorry. I'm sure you're gonna have an opportunity to ask questions, but you're talking about if I were to post something on Facebook specific to the city, not.
Specifically to anything that would fall under the jurisdiction of the planning commission. So if you're sharing a picture of your family and this is what you did on Easter, that's not gonna be the problem. Um if it's, you know, something that could fall within planning commission jurisdiction that you could potentially talk about in a meeting, that's where that could cause a problem.
So if I were to, I'm gonna make it personal. And if I were to make a post about. Climate change. I don't have Facebook, so this, I'm immune to this, but if I were to post something about climate change, is that? Something that would fall into this that I could be subject to the Brown Act? If Commissioner Dustin and liked my post that I want. Action on climate change on a global level?
Um I'm not a lawyer. I should have prefaced this.
Okay, okay.
I am not a lawyer. Maybe Steve could help. Um.
Yeah, and that doesn't necessarily.
Yeah, that doesn't necessarily sound like it, but.
Okay.
Because it's general, global, not something that would fall under your jurisdiction.
Okay, and we can move it to the question portion, but Steve, no, that maybe that question is something you should prepare for in the question portion.
Absolutely, and I, and I think that what you'd find is that the. Interpretation of the coverage of the Brown Act and, and what might fall within your subject matters jurisdiction. Subject matter jurisdiction is going to be interpreted broadly. So I, I think the message. That you need to take away from this is that you need to be cautious when engaging in those exchanges on. Any type of social media, what you think. Might not be within your subject matter jurisdiction. You may find someone disagrees with you. And then you're going to have to deal with that issue perhaps in court if you get challenged. Who were to come up in some type of Brown Act. Uh lawsuit. So. Again, it's always important to be cautious when commenting or putting something out there. And then if you are a fellow commissioner or council member, you always want to be cautious when you put a like to something. Because it could easily be interpreted in a way that. Maybe perhaps uh climate change issues are going to start factoring into these type of land use decisions. And, and then you could have someone complaining that you're having a. And then you could have someone complaining that you're having a discussion outside of a, an agendized meeting. And we want to help you avoid that type of scenario.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I always try to think back to the heart of the Brown Act that the intent is to, for every, for discussions and meetings to be open. So if it could be possibly skewed that that's not open, then that wouldn't be. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to move on next to essentials for an open and public meeting. So the meeting must be publicly noticed for you guys. For regular meetings, that's 72 hours in advance for special meetings is 24. The agenda must adequately describe the items that are going to be discussed. No action may be taken on items that do not appear on the agenda. And members of the public must be given the opportunity to address the legislative body before or during consideration of the item. We typically do that during the item. And then items may be heard in closed session for specific cases, but that only applies to city councils. So you guys don't have to worry about that. Okay, meeting defined, what is a meeting? A meeting includes any congregation of a majority of the members of a legislative body. So for you all, that's three because we have a five-member body. That you're meeting at the same time, in the same place, and to either hear, discuss, or deliberate any item that could fall within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. So that kind of goes back to what Steve was saying before about the social media post. Keep all that in mind. Okay, types of meetings, I kind of went over this a little bit already. There's regular meetings, so these are the meetings that occur at the date, time, and location that is set by council resolution. Starting...
Could I get a clarification, Christina?
Sure.
Okay, so you have a five-member commission. I'm the alternate. So if I join John and Shelley, that even though I'm the, I'm an alternate, I, that's, that's in violation of Brown Act. Is that right? Because there's only two commissioners. I'm only the alternate.
Yes, I believe, I believe so because you can be used to create quorum. So because you're an alternate, like, take our regular notice meetings. If there was only two, then you would create quorum.
Okay, okay, so it could, so even though there's only five, three constitutes a quorum, whether it be a regular member or an alternate member?
I believe so, yes. Because, like I said, even in a regular meeting, we would use an alternate to get to quorum if we needed to. Okay, all right, I'm going to go back to the regular meetings, our types of meetings. So starting next month, your guys' your meetings will move up to 6:00 PM. That's pretty much in line with everybody else as well. Everybody's moving there is a little bit earlier, which hopefully is more convenient for everybody. For regular meetings, agenda does have to be posted 72 hours in advance. That's both online and in three physical locations throughout the city. And there must be an opportunity for public comment on any matter within the jurisdiction, not only those that are on the agenda. We also have to have a general public comment period. There's also special meetings. This is any meeting that's called, that does not fall within the, the meeting set by council resolution. This only requires a 24-hour posting. When we know further in advance, we still try to give that extra time because that's just, you know, good for transparency and to help the public so that they have access to that. But the requirement is 24 hours. And for a special meeting, you only have to offer public comment for items specifically on the agenda. Often, we still give an opportunity for general public comment, but you only have to offer public comment for items on that agenda. Meetings that are not meetings, because there's an exception to every rule, right? So this would be an instance where there is a quorum, three of you or more that are gathered, but it's not considered a meeting. And so as you can see from the diagram, that includes things like conferences. So if you go to like a planning commissioner conference and, you know, all five of you are there, that's not considered a meeting. And that, that's with the assuming exception of you, you are not all sitting there talking about anything that falls within your jurisdiction. So even if you're at a conference together, if three of you or more get together and start talking about items that fall within your jurisdiction, that's where you can get into trouble. Community meetings, you also, like if you're at the, you know, if you're at Lacy Park for tree planting and you're all there, that's not going to immediately constitute a meeting. And other events like that. What is not an exception to the rule in informal gatherings? If you're going to happy hour, to coffee, and you guys meet up, that would be considered, that would be a potential for a Brown Act violation. Serial meetings are also an issue. These diagrams down here are helping, trying to help explain that. So you have the daisy chain where you have one member talk to number two, talk to number three. And so each member's talking to a different member. So you all haven't gotten together, but since you've all talked with each other, that could still be considered a meeting and a violation. The other one is the hub and spoke, where you have one person going to every single member to try and get everybody on the board. That would be an issue as well. So you really want to be careful with those. And especially with text messages and seems like everything we do these days is, you know, in some kind of writing. And, you know, tech, your text messages can be part of a public records request. So just keep all of those things in mind when you're communicating with your fellow commissioners. Okay, meeting agendas and minutes. So agendas, like I said, for the regular meetings are posted 72 hours in advance. And all of the materials must be made available to the public. They have to be posted in a place that's freely accessible to the public. They have to be available to the public during the meeting. So because we're in Zoom, that would be via our website that they could access it right now. It has to say what the date, time, and location is. And it also has to be provided to each member of the body, the local media, and any person that requests it. And then there's minutes, which are actually the official record of actions. The agendas aren't considered, you don't have to keep those permanently, like the cities, cities don't have to keep those permanently. But minutes, we do, it's a permanent record. Everybody, everybody does action style minutes, except for the library board. They do summary minutes. So that means you're not going to be able to go back to minutes and like see a transcript or see every detail. It's just going to say, here's the action that was taken, what resulted, move on to the next item. And then we also do record our meetings to help compose minutes. And now, you know, since we've moved to Zoom and stuff like that, we post those recordings to the website just for increased transparency for the public. An important note is that you can approve minutes for a meeting that you were not actually at. So if minutes are, minutes approved are on an agenda, but you weren't, you didn't happen to be at that meeting, that's okay. You can still approve those minutes. So posting times for meetings, talked about this, but already, regular meeting 72 hours, special meeting 24 hours. These may apply a little bit more for you guys, the adjourned meetings. If you adjourn to another meeting, you have to post, you have to, you have to post for, within 24 hours after that adjournment. So, so whatever location you held it right now, Zoom, it would be on our website. You have to post within 24 hours of what that next one is. Same thing for continued hearings. You have to publish, you have to notice them almost as quickly as you can to when it's been continued to. Okay, so approved actions for non-agenda items. So these are items that I know I said you can only take action on items on the agenda. But again, there's an exception to every rule. So there are certain things that you can do for non-agendized items. So you can make, you can briefly respond to statements or questions. You can ask a question for clarification. I often see this most when there's public comment, because you can't take action on any public comment during the meeting. But you can certainly, you know, ask a clarifying question of the person giving public comment to better understand what they're saying. Also, if you have an answer for them immediately, they're like, oh, you can go see this information over there or something like, that would be helpful to them, you could provide that as well. You can make an announcement or report of things that you've done on your own. If you've gone to a conference that you found interesting or something of that nature, you can certainly bring that and just you know, give a brief about that. You can provide a reference to staff. So if there's some information you'd like them to have or something to go take a look at, you can certainly tell them that. And then you can direct staff to report back to or place a matter of business on a future agenda. One of the keys about that, though, is to remember that this is asked, asked staff time permits. So you can certainly ask for it. You can tell them what you'd like to see, but you can't, again, it's the whole directing staff. You can't direct a staff, like, I want to see this at the next meeting and I want this to happen. You know, staff's going to go back and certainly we're going to try and bring it back to you as soon as we can. But you can't, you know, but it's as their time permits with what they have going on. Okay, rights of the public. This is a very important part of the Brown Act. All persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting of the legislative body of a local agency. And of course, this is by everybody's. Members of the public cannot be required to provide their names or any other information to attend a meeting. So just anybody can come in. We can't ask them to sign in or, we can't make them, excuse me, we can't make them sign in or do anything of that. Meetings can't be held in any facility that would prevent people from being able to attend for really any reason. And the public does have a right to record all public meetings. That one I know seems a little weird, but to have someone just come in and start recording. We had at a council meeting, a gentleman come in that had a GoPro strapped to his chest and was recording away and there's just nothing that can be done with that. They have the right to do that. Any agendas or other writings that are distributed to the majority of the body also have to be made available to the public. So what I do for council meetings is if we get public comments, written public comments in, I will distribute that to the city council. And then I also post it to the city website and then I will send it to the residents that have requested copies of the agenda too. That way, it's fully distributed. And then I also bring, because we meet in person, I bring a hard copy of those comments to the meeting as well and leave them out in the lobby with the agenda packet so that anybody attending the meeting could see it there. There are some, you know, if it's, if it's prepared by somebody, like just what I said, if it's something I prepared and sent out, then I, we need to have it made available before. If it's something that a public commenter brought in and wanted to hand out some leaflets to you all, we would also need a copy of that for the public to keep in the record and to, you know, share with them after the fact. And I also talked about that we have to allow members to, during regular meetings, they have to have an opportunity to speak on general items, not only agendized items. And then we've also talked about the right for the public to comment on each item of the agenda.
Question, members of public, when they come to speak and open at the appropriate time, are they required to give their name and, and address or their name or they could come up and speak without even identifying themselves?
That's correct. They're not required. We ask, we can certainly ask them, ask them to provide their name and address. We can certainly do that, but they don't have to.
Okay.
They can just come up and start talking to us and that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Limits on the conduct of meetings. So you can put some limitations around the meeting. So you can, public testimony, we do this at council meeting, right? Our standard is two minutes per public comment. When we have public hearings and we'll have an applicant and appellate, that group has 10 minutes to speak each. So you can put timeframes around that to kind of help move the meeting along. If someone's being really disruptive in the meeting, this probably is more appropriate for in-person because one of the beauties of Zoom, you can just mute people and then that's it. But, you know, you can take some actions for that. If people are, you know, talking about, you know, they came up for general public comment, but they're not talking about anything that's under the Planning Commission, you can, you know, put limits around that. And you can also put, you know, a timeframe, like, okay, we are not going to take any new, any new items at tonight's meeting after 9:00 PM. So you could certainly do that as well. And kind of one thing to think about is, once we're back in person, to really leave the premises or even sign off Zoom as soon as the meeting's over. Because again, you don't want to create that appearance of, you know, a non, you know, noticed meeting happening if you, if a couple of you or three of you are, you know, kind of chatting about what happened at the meeting or, you know, oh, I'm driving home now, anything. Just think about that appearance. If you do violate the Brown Act, criminal action, and there could be criminal action and civil remedies. Criminal, if it's criminal actions, misdemeanor, you know, if there's willful intent to deprive the public of information and the civil remedies that district attorney or really any entrusted party can pursue, it would invalidate, could invalidate any action taken at a meeting. And then, you know, there's demand to remedy and attorney's fees if prevail. So just keep that in mind that you, as a person on the commission, there could be impacts directly to you as well. Okay, any questions about Brown Act in general? Okay, nope, all right. Then I will move on to meetings that work. So this is the basics of conducting effective public meetings. And some of this you'll see will tie back to what we've already discussed. Meetings that don't work, meetings that convene late. So, you know, 6:00 PM going forward is the start time, but, you know, consistently, they're not convening until 6:20, 6:30. That's not going to work. Members that arrive late, because that could affect quorum and start, start time again. Or they're, you know, not caught up with everything, so you've got to catch them up. Meetings that go too long, that's an issue. If there's constant interruptions between council members from the audience, wherein things don't actually get done, there aren't actions taken. There's just discussion and then things kind of just get pushed along. If there's absenteeism, absenteeism, where you can't create quorum, or maybe in your guys' instance where, you know, you have absent members or alternates absent and then you can't, you know, make enough of a quorum vote for, for a location that falls within that 500-foot radius or something like that. That's something to keep in mind. And even uncomfortable accommodations, if you're back in, you know, we're back in person and it's really hot and nobody's going to think well when you're sitting there worrying about how hot you are, that, that's something that'll impact a meeting as well. Okay, first I'm going to talk about what the role of the chair is. So the role of the chair is to convene the meeting on time, hopefully. Is to help keep the commission focused and to stay on the agenda, is to help keep it moving along. So that's, you know, maybe with public comment or, you know, keeping fellow commissioners, you know, on task. And here's the section that we're at, we're at the questions, not comment. Now we're on comment, not questions, that seems in that nature. Keep control of the meeting, kind of goes in that same effect. Encourage participation from everybody on the commission. You know, the city council and the city and residents want you guys on these advisory bodies to give your opinion. So we really want to hear from everybody and make sure everybody's participating. And then listen to your fellow commissioners and hear what they're saying before you state your position. And then monitor any follow-up assignments that may come from that meeting. Then what are the responsibilities of the members? Arrive on time, this is back to the, you know, starting, meeting, starting on time. Make sure you're listening to your fellow commissioners, to any residents, to staff. Make sure you're waiting to be recognized by the chair. That helps, you know, keep the meeting going smoothly. Come prepared, make sure you've seen the agenda, you've read through the staff reports. You've done any other preliminary research that you may have done. Be respectful of others, both your fellow commissioners, staff, residents. Try and focus your remarks on the decision at hand, maybe not something that happened last, you know, meeting or the last agenda item didn't go how you'd like. Just, you know, try and let that one go and really focus on what this next agenda item is. Again, make sure you contribute. You want to hear from everybody and then commit and follow through. All right, parliamentary procedures. San Marino, we use modified Rosenberg rules. And Rosenberg rules are actually a simplified version of Robert's Rules of Parliamentary Procedures. Rosenberg's rules are meant for smaller bodies, such as ours, where we have five members. They're a bit more practical and user-friendly for organizations to use. They're used all across the nation. And we further modify Rosenberg's rule to allow for discussion prior to motion. In straight Rosenberg's rules, you know, you go from questions to a motion and then you have a discussion. We do questions, motion, we do, excuse me, we do questions, discussion, and then motion. So we've kind of done that for ourselves too. All right, and here is the procedure that should be taken for each item discussion. First, the chair will announce the agenda item number and the subject of the item. Then the chair will ask for staff to present their report. Next, the chair asks members if they have any questions regarding the item. Then we'll go, and the chair should go into public comment on that item. Then the chair will bring it back to the commission for any discussion that needs to occur. And then the chair will ask for a motion and a second and ask for, then ask for a vote on the motion. And then the result of the vote is announced. And that could either by the chair or by the advisory body secretary, however you all prefer to do that. Okay, motions and counting, there are different types of motions. Most, you know, most are the basic motion where it's like, I move to, blah, blah, blah. You can also make a motion to amend a motion. So that would be the, I move that we amend the motion to save this and that. You can substitute a motion. You can also do a motion to reconsider. The important part of the motion to reconsider is that it has to be done with, so this would be if you've completed an item, there was a motion, a second, you voted on it, you've moved on to a later item. But then you've decided, you know what, I kind of want to reconsider that. And that can only be done on items that are for this, where the item was heard in that same meeting. And then it has to be, the motion can only be done by a person that was in the majority. So if that item didn't pass because there were three no votes, then the three no votes would be the majority and one of those members could reconsider the item. The people in the two yes votes, they cannot bring that back up. And then for counting of the votes, everybody's a five member body. So that requires three yes votes for a motion to pass. If you have a tie, so a two-two situation, that means the motion did not pass. So that means there's no, essentially no action is really taken for that item. It just did not pass whatever that motion was.
I have a question about that one. My understanding is that if you only have three members present, your quorum, your three members, and you vote two to one, that that means the motion carries. Is that your understanding? That's very odd to me that that was true. I did a lot of research on it, but it was many years ago. I don't know if that's still the case because it was so unusual to me. But the city of LA has its own rules that don't allow that. So that's my understanding. Do you know if that's still true?
Yeah, I'm not positive. Steve, do you happen to know the?
You know, I believe that the municipal code says that you have to have a quorum of the planning commissions. So that would be three and that, and I'm looking at the code section right now that a majority of that quorum can take an action. But I think then it will depend on what the action is. There might be some matters that would require three votes. So it would probably be a case by case basis. We'd have to look at that to see whether or not with three, you could do something on a two to one vote. So certain actions do require three votes. And I guess we just have to evaluate it as it, as it comes up.
Well, like, like what?
In my experience, the most of that is defined in the municipal code. When I was at Anaheim and it's down in San Diego, that stuff was fairly well defined. And I imagine we have a definition here of what constitutes a quorum in our municipal code.
No, we do. It's three. But as Steve just read the, and that was exactly what I looked at before, which means two to one would be a pass. So when do you think we still would require the three votes to be in order to pass the motion?
Certain, certain actions that require three. I think some ordinances and resolutions, things that involve expenditures of money that sometimes will require three. Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at that, but.
Okay. But, but the point is, I'm not misremembering that, that it's, I, I just find that so odd that under a quorum can pass a motion. But, okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
No, that's a great point. I haven't faced that. So I'll need to add an asterisk to my PowerPoint slide to, to account for that.
It doesn't happen very often because thankfully we're a very good city where people show up.
Yes.
But on the rare, and then this happened to me, this happened to me, obviously. That's why I know about this. On the rare occasion that you do and we have three.
We have an alternate, right? And he always shows up.
Our planning commission, this has not been an issue. This was in the past.
This would probably be a rare occurrence, but the planning commission does, or the municipal code says the planning commission shall take action by a majority vote of those present and constituting a quorum.
There you go.
Action you're talking about.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Real quick, on the motion to reconsider, I understand the motion can only be made by a member of the majority. Does the entire body vote on the motion? Or only the members of the majority?
I believe it would be the entire, because it's a new motion to the commission. So I believe it would be the full commission that again votes.
It would, yeah.
Yes.
That makes sense, right?
Yeah, to bring it back. Any other questions on motions or counting? Next is courtesy into quorum. This really helps, you know, just a meeting run smoothly and efficiently. Make sure only one person has the floor at a time. This is, you know, done best by the chair recognizing each person before they speak. I know on Zoom, things are a little weird. It's much, much more obvious and easier to do that when you're in person. Discussion debate should always focus on the item and policy in question and should be free and open. So again, this is back to the, you know, stay focused on what you're discussing at that time and not maybe other things that have gone on. There are, because again, there's an exception to every rule. There are times when interrupting a speaker is permissible. So you could do that for privilege. This is, as you can see on the slide, you know, if that room is too hot or too cold, you can ask for a point of privilege to have that, you know, fixed. You can do a point of order where this is where you're asking for appropriate context of the meeting. So the chair accidentally went from questions and skipped over public comment and went in discussion. That would be, you know, point of order for public comment. You can appeal if you don't agree with a ruling that a chair has made. You can call, do the call for orders of the day, which is basically just saying, can we get back to the agenda? So maybe discussion has gone, has gone off on a tangent. And then you can also withdraw a motion. So if you put one out there, you can certainly interrupt to withdraw that motion as long as it hasn't been seconded and voted on. Okay, what is important to remember when making decisions? Make sure to focus remarks on the issue at hand. Consider and be respectful of all viewpoints, contribute and ask questions, be open minded and be thorough, but be brief. When to recuse yourself? You guys probably know this better than I actually do since you probably experience this quite often. So if there's a potential conflict, that means you should not, you should not vote. So you should recuse yourself. So these are some general ones that kind of apply to all advisory bodies. Obviously, there are ones that are more specific to planning commission. And I believe the plan is next month for the city attorney's office to come back and give you all an additional training that's specific to planning commission. But for these general ones, a conflict exists when if you, the position you hold influenced your government decision. Or if a decision you're making on the planning commission would personally impact you economically. So for instance, if it's, you know, you're looking at Mission Street improvements and you own a business on Mission Street and that would, you know, personally affect you economically, that may be, that would be an instance where you may need to recuse yourself. Where the effect will have a generally, will have an impact on you that's generally financial. And if the effects that the decision would have on you is distinguishable from what would happen for the public. So obviously you guys are going to be impacted by most of the decisions that you guys make because you live within San Marino. So this would be if it impacts you differently than it would impact the general public. And I kind of went over that example already. And then, of course, if you have questions on when to recuse yourself, you can certainly speak with staff first. And if you guys aren't sure, still aren't sure if it's appropriate to recuse yourself, then there's the city attorney's office that can always help you as well. Any questions about running a successful meeting or really anything in general?
I have a general question and maybe the answer to this question is that it will be discussed at a future training and I'm certainly okay with that. But when I learned all this, Brown Act went hand in hand with ex-party communications. And of course, we are a body that involves, handles quasi judicial, quasi judiciary matters. It made me think about it today because everybody was talking about going to the coffee shop and, and and how technically, I know nobody did this, but technically if the owner of the coffee shop had been talking to a commissioner about this item that was coming on, you know, I, I think they would have to tell us all that they had that quote unquote ex-party communication. So I don't know, city attorney, is that something that we're going to be hearing about? Is that something we could do a two minute thing on now? It's something I've been talking about for however many years I've been on this, this commission. I think this is something we need to know about ex-party communications.
Well, that's something we can certainly talk about when we come back in the future with additional training. In some elective and appointed bodies that I've represented, that that's been a standard practice for anyone, especially in a, a situation where you're considering a, a land use entitlement to disclose any ex parte communications that may have occurred prior to taking any action on that particular item. And we can bring that back when we discuss further training in a month or two.
Okay, great. I know it's quick, but we've never been told that. And it's always, I mean, I don't know that that's something you just know if you haven't been, for lack of a better word, trained. And I think that is something that anybody that, that handles it, that falls into judiciary needs, needs to know. Don't do it. And if you do do it, let us know. Okay, thanks.
The rule we used to have in an earlier iteration of the planning commission, if anyone wanted to talk to you about an upcoming project, politely tell them, let's save it for the hearing and do not have any discussion because you have an appearance there. Obviously, to people who would oppose that, that there was some impropriety going on. And that's the last thing you'd want to get into.
Right. And when we do that future training, we can have a discussion about due process concerns. It's one of my favorite topics and it's, I think, a very interesting topic when it comes to what you do in your role where you're making decisions on matters of public concern and where is the boundary line? You know, beyond which you don't want to have those type of contexts or make statements in public about a quasi judicial matter that's going to come in front of you. I think the case laws case law on both sides of this issue. And I think it's a difficult area for anybody, whether you're on city council, planning commission, design review to navigate. So I'd be happy to include that in any future training.
However, you, you could speak to, you know, someone, but as long as you recused yourself on that matter, then it wouldn't be an issue, correct?
Of course.
So, yeah.
I mean, if you had that.
Right, okay.
But watch out because if someone sees you talking to another commissioner, you know, they're going to assume you're passing on some information you learned from someone else.
Right. I mean, if it was like a party not related to the commission and, and
Right.
There's no, you know, you're going to recuse yourself regardless. And you're, as to, to city clerk's example, if you did own a business on mission and you had spoken about this case with the applicant from Aspara, but you recuse yourself, there would be no conflict.
Correct.
Is my understanding.
That's correct.
And I would just always keep in mind, even, you know, the perceive, perception that something ethical is not, you know, something is unethical is happening, that's dangerous too. So just always keep that in mind as well.
And just, just as a footnote, why get yourself in that position to begin with?
Right.
You want to avoid that.
Yeah.
Any other questions or anything? And I will say this is a brand new presentation, brand new training. So if you do, if there are any other additional items that you guys would like to see on there that kind of apply to the general, because again, you guys will be getting a second training that's specific. Please let me know if you have questions at any time. Feel free to reach out to me, cityclerk@cityofsamorino.org. Reach me on phone, on the, on my phone. I'm at City Hall all the time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We very much appreciate it, Christina.
Great.
And with that said, I don't think there's anything else to discuss since that was the last agenda item. So I shall. Howard, are you trying to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to pose one question. When are we all going to get together and do it like we used to do it four years ago or three years ago? Where we're in City Hall and we're sitting down and and we're acting like normal people. When does that happen?
And, and aren't we supposed to have news starting times? Or is it the, the starting time moving up to six?
Six PM. Yeah.
That way we have time to go over to Asara for a glass of wine afterwards.
Yeah. Vice Chair Brody, I believe that we all made the decision that if we couldn't, if we couldn't all be in person, then we would stick with Zoom. And I do not want to put a commissioner right on the spot, that one of she at one time mentioned that she was not planning on coming in person because of being immunocompromised. And so we as a body agreed to stay on Zoom and unless that has changed for her, which she does not have to disclose at this time. But unless that's changed for her, I think that, you know, because we are a commission that really respects one another and that we will stay with, my impression is that we will stay with Zoom until we were, we are all able to be present in person.
And, and my apologies, Jerry. I didn't know that.
Yeah, no, I, I very much appreciate that. I did have some health issues that I'm not going to go into. Still dealing with some of it, I'm sorry to say, but not to the immunocompromised aspect. So I could now, however, I was speaking with Director Figaro just the other day about this, numbers are going up again. You know, so to the, just, does it make sense, I guess, just from that standpoint? But thank you very much, Chair. I really appreciate that. And shame on me. It's been a recent phenomenon. I should have told you about my change in condition.
No. Yeah, no, no apology needed. I just wanted to, you know, I wanted to address the question from Vice Chair Brody to say that, you know, that was one of the reasons why we all decided to stay on Zoom and.
No, I'm sorry. I was going to say, when you do see me in person, you will know what I'm talking about, but I'll just leave it there.
Oh, oh, now I'm, now I'm curious, but.
I have an eye issue.
Oh, which is, okay.
It's a long ugly story, which I'm not going to say.
Anyway, yeah, so all of that is just to say that I think that that's something that we can discuss in the future and maybe Director Figaro, you can talk to each commissioner individually and then maybe we can discuss and come up with a plan for when we all feel comfortable coming back in person, especially as the cases are rising.
Sure, no problem. And I, and I think one of the other, the other issue is the space available for conducting a meeting. So at this point, I think I'll get together with city manager. And again, you know, I think all the committees and commissions are meeting via Zoom. City council is the only one that's in person at this time. And so if anything changes, I will let you know. But I think for the meantime, we should just plan on meeting on Zoom until further ado.
And before we adjourn this meeting, there is a request from somebody in the public who would like to talk because they have a question and I believe we have the availability in our agenda to take.
Yeah, before, before we adjourn, there is on the agenda items for public comment and written communications.
Right. And so, and I believe we have a public comment from, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your name correctly, but you can unmute yourself and hello. Can you state your name for us?
Yes, my chief on one.
Okay. Sorry.
I have a question. Is, is that the demodestment and the new instruction of the, the property on eighteen sixty-five S. Los Robos Avenue is on today's agenda today?
It was the applicant of that particular agenda item requested a continuance to an unspecified future date. So no, it's, we addressed that it was agenda item number one and we moved to continue it to a future date that is yet to be specified.
Okay, so there will be another. And we'll be.
Yeah, Mr. Little, this is, this is Director Figaro. So you can contact the project planner, Camilia Martinez, who is on this Zoom meeting. And you can contact her in regards to future meeting dates and either she can notify you directly or you could always go to the planning commission webpage and see the agendas.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
I think you have a good evening.
Thank you. So are there any other public, oh, oh, I'm not muted. Are there any other public comments at this time? So then I believe I can move to adjourn this meeting. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Happy Memorial Day.
Thank you.